Tennessee Fire Commission, April 22nd. Twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Good job.
All right. Uh, Director, would you take the role?
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Ham.
Here.
Commissioner Lindra.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Bodra.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Solomon.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
There is a form.
Alright, so. They all have a lot of items. Uh, we'll cover a few things and I think we have to add some items to the agenda during the talk session. Minutes. I was a little slow. I've got some highlighting. I have some highlighting directions on DVD. Uh, anybody else, I mean, we don't. It would be more ideal if you sent it to them ahead of time, but of course I didn't do it, which it was a short meeting. Well, with the meetings, at least my opinion were better this time, or more medium. More definition of more understandable. So, look, I've got, I'll get this to you in just a minute. I have a few directions to keep carrying back. So, I believe we have microphones. And the pastor.
That gets up the whole room. You don't really go.
They can't hear in the back.
Yeah, they can't hear in the back.
Well, I was talking pretty loud. A sense of reason. A sense of doubt. Can you hear me now? Can I get my microphone? Yeah, that's pretty loud. Five, six minutes. Like I say. Sorry, I'm putting just a few typos without that. We get to that part of the. We're going to give a report on the E F P, E F P committee yesterday. On the, we want to give that false.
We could do now or wait?
Wait. Just a few minutes. A minute. And, uh, I guarantee before everything that there's two resumes in fact. Does anybody clarify man what they go with? The big else and Hannah. Sixteen sixty-four, but no. It's, um. Four nine one. Who? Would you like the hazard, hazard communication, fifteen hundred hazard communication and one hour. That's where it is. So, somebody can, where are you? That's not up there. Five oh five F four, which is the. Hazard impermeability indicator still preventing. I think those are the two classes they got once. Okay. They just didn't really. They were, they were hanging out there on their own and they weren't trying to be. Or on this.
So, Chairman, those are coming, those courses are coming from vector.
Okay.
So, those are the instructors for their class.
Yeah, there. I'd be. Really business. The other thing I think we should discuss, at least in my word, my thought process, was Johnson City's request. There's a couple of. There's, there's a couple of certain things that could be going on. As you stated, but, um, bringing up. That, is that appropriate to have in speaker in the course session? Yeah, we point to that one. The Johnson City request for who's denied salary something passed away before finishing the training. So. And the only exceptions of not finishing the training in the law is actually if TCA four twenty-four two oh two. If they deploy everything else to qualify under seven oh one oh two. Two B is that they had to finish the training. That means they qualify. Now. In those letters stating that in the past, some people may have gotten on, that's. Again, I can't remember everything we talked about. It's me. I don't know if us approve it. If it was approved, it was not in the office.
That's exactly what.
And that's a possibility. I'm not saying it didn't. It probably shouldn't have happened because the only exception to not, the only way. Not finish the training and receive the money is ready TCA two oh two. If they receive orders in support of enduring freedom. Or, or one name ongoing military confidence. It's kind of how the law reads it, four twenty-four two. Those, oh seven, oh two, two B is very specific. We qualify and must complete the forty hours from third. Now again, I'm not saying they didn't get it, but that's something that was done in the office without.
Historically, that's what it was.
And, and go on another step. Maybe it's a rule change we need to make. But it's not in a rule board side of the grid line. It's aware of, but that's, that was just kind of what they put that on tape. Uh, I think these guys. These guys are with us. So, because we can't wait. Uh, and where the whole item and even salary stuff. I would think, I would think the director can take discretion and not a day they do have.
I think that's why it was presented to us is because they're, they're directions. And historically on, based on customer service out of the commission office, it's been paid in the past. And.
I think it's something we need to fight the people against.
Yeah, it's just not there today. And I, I mean, maybe we can. Ask in legal opinion during the break if, if it's favorable. I couldn't see that it was. They have very limited favorable policies. I think they're on three, three. Yeah, I need to be. It has to have one in one year. Anyways, I, I just. It puts us in a no win situation because we do want to support the. Well, there is, it's an action. I think someone will be doing official record. I just thought a little. We may have one in early. If you're thinking about it, how well? Do we have to? Well, I think they, it's like, let's say, intro level of the middle answer. We take action. He's still, I didn't find. For a time, it's manifestation, it's a time, it's a state. Well, everybody in the office. But we take them. They just don't like the dogs, but. Well. They can't have a, and I'm a policy. So, let me ask you this, but more or less everything, when approved in the passing, what's wrong with that?
I agree.
Slippery slope now. This is a fire. That's what we're here about. And I, I'm here on board by everybody at the state, isn't it? Where somebody can, well, say, somebody in our office approved this in fact.
In violation of the rules. There's two laws really.
I agree with that.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I, I, that's why I think it's funny. But I don't think we can wait. Any way of legal. Final. Possible solution for air and all things is, uh, uh. Guys that consider it is a late sentence. For his members, members to call him down at least four years, our parents, our, uh, insurance program. And they can do substitution as the leading everyone they got with. Stay within the letter of policy. And still do the right things, whatever. Has to be, has to be, all these have to be done. The other move is two thirty. Everything has to be able to go over two thirty.
But if there's a waiver submitted substitution, we get the forty hours and that would be, as it said, that would be a.
That's on you.
It's on you, sure.
There's a bottom.
Alright, thank you.
Will excuse. There's a base issue. While, um, actually that.
Exclusion for this and we can change.
Yeah, it was the start of the week and you can't have the other department. Because in the, in the first part of two oh two, we just said we like rules for how the money is distributed. Except that's two oh one, two oh two said, boy, that's bad. That's in state law.
And then discuss these.
Yeah, and roll the subject. Do you have anything else that you want to?
So, I'd like.
Oh, pass.
Yeah, are we ready to add on?
Yeah.
No. Alright. So, I want to add letter H. It's going to be a waiver for Ethan Ody, O O D Y. To test firefighter two within thirty days of testing firefighter one using the military plan. Uh, contingent on Director Zimmerman. Well, I mean, then it's just the added waiver for him to be able to test firefighters within thirty days testing firefighter one.
Same intention. Any discussion on any of that? All the things that. Mike's son said. Page is there.
And then I is to add, uh, the agenda, a schedule for the rule subcommittee to meet on a monthly basis. Yes, I would say that. We have a lot of. I was, I was.
All those people, say hi.
Uh.
First of all, it's Mike's son, David. And I believe there are many.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add the, the I A I representative, um, from Hamilton County is here. He wants to bring forth in front of the. The commission, um, for training for the conference and pigeon boards this year.
There is a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All the papers say hi. All supposed, thanks, uh, David, Mike, Jerry, and, uh, they have. Thank you. Any other idea in the agenda or discussed in the one session? Not. Sort of back in that twenty plus day of the coffee break. Now, I'm starting to read the reading. Commissioner, this is me and the Tennessee Fire Department Commission for April twenty-second. Very good to take the role on, in the change. Over.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Ham.
Here.
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 Here. Here.
Here.
There is a form.
Dude, I'll leave it for it this time. And Christian Ham will be played the reasons. Father, we approach that problem, mercy embracing. So, thank you, stay in this great country we should live. Most especially in this great career we blessed to have. To serve our communities, to serve our friends, our neighbors. We have to stay that we keep our, all our members safe and the goal is to go home. Few disappointments when we make decisions that affect individual firefighters and the profession across the state. If we make. Decisions that are sound and then we see need to make corrections to those decisions along the way, we be, we can. And make those corrections. Again, making it in the best interest of all firefighters and improve their safety and professional and their abilities to advance in their careers. Thank you so much. We invite you to break.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. And the people for liberty and justice for all.
Intendations of group events since twenty twelve, we're going to be having a meeting with a few persons.
I make a motion to approve with corrections of the previous meeting minutes.
Which is, which is God's camera. Is she both right? All those people, say hi.
Hi.
Any. I was legal and do a car living in this, uh, and y'all got a copy, but I'll let you, I'll let you have your findings. You have, you have to bird dog this. Or you can just say it anyway.
Yes, um, so the rules that we've been working on will become effective July first of this year.
Big announcement. So, we're going to start work. Father, you push me back. Say, we. We'll be sorry on this. Yes, Steve. So, they all, I used to formally forward to that. Give us one second, grab a sheet. If I got a chance to sign one. Here's where one has not had gender. It's check against. Alright, communication to us. I didn't say Joshua was going to move. It's longer. Uh, there he is. Take your reference. Anything, you're, you're. Can you hear your case? Sorry.
Uh, what I was going to say, I started back, uh, a large, uh, Instagram run, which is my second building commission. Uh, been meeting everybody, uh, pushing, uh, educational centers application. The, uh, biggest thing that we talked about, of course, is what the commission has been talking about recently with the legal changes and the voluntary education settlement. So, more, it's good, all, and I have a way to. That's all I have.
Steve.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Uh, non-estuary board, decent, everything's going great. Just finished the. Fire department's step one test validation. Thanks for the assistance to, uh, full entry of every quantity and the fire camp. I'll have the board decent.
Don. Tennessee.
Good morning. Uh, there's not really anything to report for the middle of Tennessee other than we're. After the first three year of all the test events being scheduled across the area, we've gone, got to, you know, and kept charging. So now we're focusing on the V I P and trying to set up some commission one oh ones. Uh, we've got three up in the works, grabbing, playing on things to get sound value on all of our work.
And I got two quick things on that. It's in history bill, one, you may be back in, but, uh. For the volunteers, I'm like, I'm big grants and twenty million dollars being associated session. And also, uh, ten million for rescue squads and five million, I guess, eight, six. Uh, came out of this session and something on budget. And what I said, twenty million was in November, but those three are, we can go to Friday. And we had three more cancers that passed yesterday and announced about six P M last night. It wasn't not going to pass. It just kept, one day it died ninety-seven. Another day it died forty-seven. It had worked its way up to the chain. Uh, so those are some big things that affect, uh, the fire service globally. Those changes to, to all. Hospital eighty-three, does it probably come back? It's about building municipalities, where annual service is from out of the calendar. That's the summer study. So, I add those to the announcements. Just for the general knowledge of the room.
Uh, before we get to your part, uh. Coordinator Morel, how many commission one oh one classes do you order in East Tennessee?
Normally, Steve.
How many? One oh one commission classes have you caught in East Tennessee and how many do you have on schedule?
In the last ten months, I've got six, seven maybe, and currently have none on schedule.
Okay. I asked because during the V I P meeting yesterday, one of the things that I took away was there's a lot of confusion. In East Tennessee concerning rules surrounding V I P and I was just curious on. How effective those commission one oh one courses are in East Tennessee?
All my commission one oh one courses are proposed on a data sample, the commission middle counter. Uh, but to answer your question, the participation is not great. I would say the average attendance is probably. Fifteen and out of those fifteen, typically the open department will send. In people in their department and those tend to be brand new correctionary lines. So, I'd say fifteen is the average. Not all fifteen is the, the high demand. That will be the problem. This is very clear. Thank you.
Jason. Be back.
Good morning. That's glad, isn't it? So, uh, we have a recruit class, um, ongoing right now. They'll graduate May second at ten A M. And, uh, the next thing is our hard people orientation. And, uh, the next thing is our hard people orientation, the classes that are about to come, until the birth of them will be spoken about in the weekend. Uh, 31, May, June 1. And upper Cumberland weekend, which is September 20 and 21. And then TFA conference in Jackson, Tennessee, and that one will be September 27th to 28th. So those will be back-to-back weekends. Our new 95-foot platform is coming. It's moved out a little bit now, but, uh, we're still walking, uh, with the visitor and we think the end of July is, uh, a realistic timeline for it to be delivered now. Our residential burn buildings, we have, the floors are poured, the electrical work inside the building and outside is done. They just haven't reached that concrete yet to get power to the building or the ass to the building. But, uh, in other words, they were out yesterday looking at that, uh, what they have to do, and the contractor was there. So they're still saying May 2nd. But, uh, we're looking forward to getting that turned over to us. And then, uh, we're still sending free training for volunteers. Turned in some numbers the other day that we are, or at least for this portion of the year, we're well above what we were at last year, uh, in training volunteers for free. And then the last thing I'll say, we had scheduled our 111 on campus. That we were gonna try that, see if it worked a six week, and, uh, we didn't get the enrollment we expected to get. Not enough to release the same thing class, so what we did was convert it back to an hour off of what we intended. So that one is up, and, uh, I believe we can register it in GADIS now. That's all I have, Derek.
Figure we're going down, anything else? That's big enough, uh, say the rules you got.
Yes, that's going up for that right there.
Uh, will Assistant Commissioner review the calendars, if you'd like to say? Uh, Director's Report, your zone.
Good morning. Um, I am pleased to announce that we are officially fully staffed at the commission office now. Um, our coordination manager started on Monday. Unfortunately, he was not able to be doing this at this meeting, and Skeeter's currently in Orlando, Florida, at the NSAC conference, which I would be attending later on this week. I'll be leaving this afternoon, we go down there for that. Um, so by the half, you know, he's been, even in the four days, he's been in the office, he's been working very diligently, going over all of our policies and procedures, we've met all the office staff. So, um, I hope she'll sit down very soon, we have the next three, four weeks to go over some of how we do practical testing and all the work towards our online testing, which ultimately we need to get to. Um, as far as EIP, EIP stats, currently we have 78 career departments submit, which is a total of 6,883 full-time firefighters. Um, they have been, we have paid out five batches. Uh, as of this time, we have 52 combo departments submitted for a total of 700, and our full-time are 380 or volunteer. Volunteer departments, we've had 35 departments and 337 volunteers. So that's current stats for that reciprocity. We currently have from 2011, or sorry, 2025, we've had 90 more applications, but 237 more certificates issued. 32 certificates denied. Something else I'd like to add, I'm going down to last SBA, you know, full-time degree for the last four weeks. Um, and some of them I will share with them, I don't want to share with the board, and you also in this room. Um, you may or may not know that state currently holds a license here for a case that covers FFC, TFA, and Toledo. Um, they're in the process of that, you know, of splitting. So with this split, with Toledo getting their own account and then TFA and the C having our own account, we will now be able to hopefully turn also features in a case that we've not been able to access in PECs. So be looking for some things to change in the case, and some of them that you might want to pass on to your training officers or the college unit areas. So again, sorry to bring that to your attention. As far as branch report, that's all I have.
Well, see, we have a whole business. We do actually have one other item to add, the new business, the name is, hey, you? Tammy?
I'm a promoter.
I'm KSP on 2024, Southern Southern. Sprint organization, we're a bunch of different rooms, see if you get lucky enough, we know. Here's what draws them in, yeah, but you... I'm taking it, all those, uh... No, two second.
Second.
Jay Moore second. All of them, say hi.
Hi.
Those are probably lights, huh? That's had five days, everything. Alright, I'm paying under new business is a sub-three or more of the EIP or EIP. Yeah, that do.
Yeah, that would be me. So we had our second official, uh, BEIP, GIP supplement meeting yesterday at the River County Fire Station. Thank you, Director of Vote Right, for having that set up for us. Um, and one of the things that we heard again, and this is a common theme, is that, uh... We need to look at the workaround for the volunteer as far as the mission. Um, unfortunately, for volunteer department, they don't have the resources available to them, like a career department, where they have a full-time, dedicated training officer that can join them, put a program together, have it submitted by the October birth deadline, and then to be able to execute that program in the coming year. Um, so one of the things that I spoke out of this, and I believe you're a mentor on board, is one of the things that we should look at is the actual October birth deadlines submission. And whatever we do, we want to make it uniform across the board, not only for the volunteer side, but also on the career side. So what does that look like? And one of the, one of the ideas that came up was, what if we turn around and where we did our full submission of our program at the end of the calendar year, which was held, a class, not a class to offer, but a class scheduled, if you will, uh, these are the classes that were performed, with the days that were performed, and that would be the submission for the EIP program itself. Which, in that case, it would do away with doing what we do. Um, the October birth deadline would go away. And it could help spur the participation of the EIP program, uh, for all people involved with it. Um, the second piece of this is, we have so many volunteer departments that do not participate in any type of hazmat response. And so to, one, one of the thesis of the fire commission, one of the purposes of the fire commission is to enhance the overall firefighter, for the first day of Tennessee, in getting them certified. Um, but for some of the volunteer departments that don't have the resources available to go through the commission testing, um, what would it look like? And so we know we have minimum training standard per DCA that every firefighter must complete going through, uh, to be a firefighter. And so if we look at between the Tennessee-only certificate for volunteer firefighters, and there's other states that actually have this certification, um, what would it look like? So a 16-hour, a 64-hour, uh, a lot of time. And then, one of the other caveats to it is a hazmat awareness, because it's only important that they at least have an awareness level in hazmat in order to be able to perform the functions, right? They don't necessarily have to do the operations, but to be able to operate your DRP guidebook, that, that's basic. So the actual volunteer to be able to know how to read a, how to read a ERG, um, is not asking too much. And that's an easy class that can be taken online through DM Fire, or they could be offered through TACF for one of their free courses, uh, for the volunteer program. And then what would happen is, that volunteer, once they have all four of those thesis submitted to the commission, uh, that fit for that volunteer firefighter, and add that, replace the firefighter one aspect of the EIP program for them. Um, I think that would be something that's actually very easily attainable, um, it's not asking too much. And, uh, that suffice, because the EIP program is basically us saying, hey, we want you to have this minimum number of hours of training. But it really is a side piece of what we do as a commission, because eventually we are... Got a call. I'm not gonna respond. Um, so that, that's where we're, we're leading forth with this, this supplement. Um, and there's a lot of confusion, although when it comes to rules, and this is why Coordinator Morel, I, I asked about the commission 101 classes. There's a lot of confusion of how do I submit, how can I attain, how, um, how many hours can I use for medical? Or, and as you know, because you used that on the, the meeting with us, with the rules, we did change the number of online hours for volunteer EIP. We left that 20, which is the same for the career side, um, the volunteer hours. But also, when it comes to medical, you can take 16 hours of medical and add that into your training. Um, and there was confusion of, well, we couldn't use medical, and the question is why? But also, when it came to hazmat operations, we took away the, uh, maximum number of hours for what you complain for hazmat, to make it attainable for the volunteers. If they wanted to do a hazmat operations class, they could utilize all 40 of those hours for this. Um, so I think when we sit down to do the rewrite of the EIP rule, we definitely need to look at spelling it out very clearly and, and make it make sense, because a lot of things that we have right now don't make sense, and, um... Reverting to my notes real quick. And one of the other pieces is, we, we definitely need to look at and work around right now for the volunteer, because I was speaking to Tina in the office the other day, and there've been quite a few denials that have taken place because of them not meeting certain parts of the rules that actually, uh, had gone to look back this year because of the dates that we put in the original rules and the throwing of that. Um, and so what we... Keep motivated to, to test it. There's not a going to break, a, a recon test taker, we know this, we've seen it in HMO. Um, so those are just a couple of things. Commissioner Green?
Uh, one other thing I've got, is just to kind of go back to this, Commissioner Moore asked me as well. When he's talking about getting away with the June 1 deadline and the turning the days, and it's the end of the year, one of the reasons this got brought up was talking to Tina in the office. So I asked Tina, when she does her internal audit in the office, does she go back and look at the dates? We submit by October 1 deadline. Answer was no. She looks to see what classes you taught, and if your personnel meet those items. And I promise you, you don't have something that's not submitted right. Tina's not gonna process your paperwork till it is fixed and returned back to her office. And that's kind of the, the backstory of why maybe that might be a little bit easier, especially for volunteers. I mean, I've got volunteer departments in our area that don't even have internet service or a computer in their station. And it makes it really, really hard for some of them to even try to attempt this. But if we can try to change some of these things and make it a little bit easier, I think our, our rate as far as the total amount of departments participating will come way up. Uh, and that's the whole goal, is to make sure that we're training, make sure that we're doing ours, if we're supposed to, and everybody's got the training that they need. That's just a little backside, that way they know where we're coming from.
And Commissioner Green brought up the June deadline. No, we're just strictly talking about the October birth submission of classes for the, the next coming year for as far as... That's, that's okay. Commissioner N, I'm actually going to talk, so did you want to add anything? So, thank you. That's report from the supplement.
For those of you who haven't followed this, in theory, what this was created at the time Senator Bell carried this bill, they hoped that 5,000 volunteers could put in for this out of the state. Didn't happen. I think at its height, we had 900, maybe 30-something at first year. And now you hear this year is down to 337. Now that does, I don't think that includes the combo volunteers, but...
Yes, between combo volunteers and volunteers, it's roughly about 600.
600. But it's not falling all the way up, it's going in the wrong direction, according to those on Capitol Hill. That was never the intent to make it doable, not impossible. I mean, there's career departments that struggle with the case, you know, that's beyond it. And then you want a volunteer department to carry that out? It's like doing it, have the pleasure of doing a state travel forum, the book's about this big. To do that on your own till you get it down. So that's, our goal is to make it doable under our umbrella. And that's what the subcommittee is about, and that's why the rule subcommittee is starting to meet more regularly to address Chapter 7 as our, in the rules. Just really, I mean, it has money tied to it, that's control of all the systems, well, everybody wants to be... You know, and people always say, well, that's only $600. Well, when you multiply that on several hundred or several thousand, you get into a million-dollar program, and then that is significant. There's a significant amount of money that we manage through that program. Right, uh, and the vector training courses. The world commission, entertain a motion?
I entertain a motion, approval.
Mr. Solomon, thanks a motion for approval, a second?
I'll see you.
Any other question, Commissioner Green?
I have a question, though.
Any, yeah, any discussion?
For one hour, I thought you had a, a rule, a, a...
No, minimum one hour. Yes, for online classes, minimum one hour. What happened was before, when they presented other classes in the last meeting, there were some that were actually 30-minute in length, and that's what we denied.
And how many classes did you choose to, right, both have, and? Hang on.
Want to communicate, if you want to stop, no.
And the resumes of their leaders, please, pretty, uh, experience.
Yes.
Let's just say the experience. Let's just say the experience here. Uh, no further discussion, all those in favor of approving vectors through any courses? Think about this, hang on.
Aye, aye.
Those like sign, yeah, that's happy. I don't see Tennessee, 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 or our son, I don't think they're in the room. But it's a pretty detailed package.
Now, he said if we needed to add any questions, I could give them a.
Yeah, and we'll approve this at least ten years time, I can think of. Uh, entertain a motion for approval. Mister by Commissioner Scott, thank you, uh, Commissioner Bowden, any discussion?
Thank you.
Any non-holds favorite, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed like sign, yeah, that's happy. I'm D, Rockville High School. I think it was HMA.
Sixty, sixty-four HMA.
And several high schools we approved, although.
That's correct.
You use, trying to get that recruiting pool started earlier.
Person, thank you.
And I second it.
Should I push it up right? Second by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed like sign, yeah, that's happy. I have a meeting, is this, I'm here, it's called the Steve Whaley Rescue Course. He is here.
So.
I make a motion for approval. Trevor, who's your Solomon?
Second.
Second, I push above right. Any questions for the applicant, if you just hear. Or questions in general, it's a pretty thorough. No questions, all those in favor, signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign, yeah, that's happy. I have a Johnson City Department, quest for, uh, fairly supplement that's denied to a cease member.
I make a motion that we, based on historical, uh, actions done in the commission office, that it be made.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Bowden. Any further discussion?
Only thing I just add that we will, that we do need to look at this and the rules going forward and clean it up and make sure that we can find what's going across. But I definitely think that this needs to be done, I agree.
All those in favor of approving this payment, signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said it. Item H? Okay, gee, sorry, Jim, I'm speeding, sorry. I'm G Medical Legal Class, submitted by Michael, I'll win.
So if the commission would like, I can speak on this as it was one of my defendants that actually, uh, built this class.
So we're going to give a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Bowden, second by Green. Discussion.
This class, uh, is being taught not only on the police department side, but also on the fire department side in West Tennessee. Uh, it's very thorough class as Lieutenant Highville has many years of not only courtroom testimony, uh, both on the fire and EMS side, but it, uh, really opens up a lot of eyes on how we need to make sure we're documenting in, in such, um, it's been widely accepted by a lot of the departments in West Tennessee, asking for more, and they wanted the CAFIS as part of an approved full course for EIP purposes. And that's why he asked for it to be brought from the commission.
No, we have, yes.
Uh, I believe it's four.
Probably. I'm just trying to be specific.
Three hours. Three hours.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by the saying aye.
Aye. I second. You two.
Scott, extension.
My flip, my flip. Time to flip, interest.
Don't understand him. Should start. Now, I have H, firefighter two thirty day waiting room. I make a motion for approval. Solomon?
I want to second it, but I want to add a stipulation that a letter, an official letter that bring out verbal, be received by Director Zimmerman for the request for waiver.
I have actually received a email from him currently requesting the waiver, so.
There we have it.
I have.
I can think here.
And this is a waiver law, and it makes sense, we can also contest on the court of justice. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, yeah, I said it. Uh, I don't, I am, uh, now, I didn't clear this with staff, so we're moving to that discussion. Schedule monthly rule, subcommittee meetings. Entertain a motion?
So the motion is that the rules subcommittee will meet the second, third, second, or, yes, second Thursday of each month, alternating between teams and in person. Because we have a lot of work.
And second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Scott, any motion? To bring second? Um, discussion staff, is that okay with you that we're not too much and about teams maybe have this help?
Alternate between teams and a physical location.
Location. And I can always provide one through the department, not across from the hotel, always like to go to the, the.
Theater is the charity department, or whatever, they won't know on the interstate.
Jury, jury.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, still, they talk, it's very, actually. We, we can settle dates, starting in that.
That's right.
First one, yours? All right. No further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, yeah, I said it. Right, I'm J, I have a double A, uh, conference in Bishop Ford. Do, do we have anything riding on that yet? I had a.
And I, and I need to amend that, or I'm gonna make a motion, but it's gonna be two, um, it's two separate things. One is a symposium in West Tennessee, and then the other one is the conference in East Tennessee. So they've come up with a symposium this year in West Tennessee to try to provide more coverage completely across the state so that our fire investigators can get training all the way across the state. So he's gonna present both of them, and I'd like to have that put as a motion for both of them to be approved, please.
I second it.
Commissioner? Motion by Commissioner Harry, second by Commissioner Scott. You got the mics, if you want to give a quick explanation.
Hey. W Cleveland County, but also I sit on the training management committee for Tennessee I double A I. So this year, we have branched out to our west partners. Um, a lot of people will travel to the east where we have our conference in August. And so we kind of missed our customer base out towards the west. So we came up with the idea of doing a three day symposium to see if it would work. We would like to follow what we've done with our program in Bishop Ford, which is hit the EIP program for it, which normally it gives us about thirty-four hours of EIP for Bishop Ford. We would request that we could get twenty and a half hours for our west symposium. And that's what we're requesting today.
And you have more detail to provide the director?
I do, I do.
Uh, that's, there's the synopsis, we'll show them a little more.
We, we got all testing and everything, you got all this. This just got put together last week, and I knew we were on the timeframe to get the maiden done, so I decided to come here and do it myself.
I'll amend that motion, but he submits all that to the director, please.
He may have something we could, that's all.
Because I know he will. I'll be everywhere.
Any further discussion, I don't really, I have two classes, one west and one east. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, opposed? I said it.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Gary.
Your first favorite for a meeting, item K audits. Vice chairman, it's out of the way, those, those lucky winners.
Now, this is.
These ones are better, because they actually got paid out.
Correct. So based on them participating last year in being paid out this year, and this is not including any new, that would be new members participating for this past year, which we would need to add to that list as well. Um, but for the twenty twenty-four program audit, in the east, we have Alcoa, Bradley County, Etowah, Gatlinburg, Grebel, Jefferson City, Jacksboro, Bacalet, Sevier County, Sevierville, Benore. In middle Tennessee, we have Ashland City, Brentwood, Larsburg. I always get this one.
The car, that's your, that's your.
That's your, that's your. Yeah, thank you. Franklin, Hendersonville, Dolansville, Shelbyville, Hilo-Homon. In the west, we have Arlington, Lexington, Oakland, Highporten, Trenton, if they're participating, which they may not be, Union City, and Martin.
And if this was someone's first year in the program, they automatically have to be on the, you have to add those to the list. And if you're disappointed, you can get drawn, come see us. Pull it to the list. Be sure to be stringing up here. All right, the next fun part of the agenda, day of future meeting. We don't have to move motion on it, too. They've got the list, and I guess we might motion approve it, but. But I think we're, I don't think it's, enough of a motion. And it's, it's a requirement when they take the money, they know they're in the pot. Uh, day of future meeting, how soon will you all be your next meeting? Oh, sorry, yeah, I run all of them.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission about, I'm just covering today, or, or, or need with the rules committee of EIP meeting? Fairly frequently, we, we're, we've got a lot going on.
Chairman, question, Commissioner, thank you. I just want to thank you and the, the family for that approval. Uh, but I do want to just say I appreciate the, uh, recognition of the confusion and the need for clarification on that. I do think that, uh, one of the things that would be, uh, helpful as you build through that process is to, uh, look at the terminology and the uses, uh, throughout the rules. Uh, the, the terms eligible and qualified. Uh, they, it seems to be, uh, in some places distinct in their meaning, and in other places it seems to be used interchangeably. And I believe that, uh, something I would be definitely able to improve the understanding of that. Also, I just wanted to, um, bring to the staff's attention that, you know, in the past, uh, this has been discussed in the one-on-one classes, and it was, uh, explained in a way that we interpreted. Uh, and so that being to be clarified as well. But again, thank you for your consideration and understanding of the situation, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I want to, uh, I've done this before, but I'm gonna bring it up again. Commissioner Henry, I've done this before, but I want to bring it up again. I want to thank, uh, Director Sparks from, um, T-Factor. Just to let y'all know, I, I try to keep up with this and, um, stay out of this. I bet it is, because I have a son, it's, I do screw. But because of this man starting a programming with the volunteer department to push these younger firefighters into our field, um, there are several, uh, like this Rockville or whatever across the state that are coming to us now and asking for these programs. And I really appreciate it because we decided to find interns, City of Franklin, because of that program that he started. Our, our explorer program took it and started training these guys, and we were able to hire five interns that are eighteen years old, right out of high school, that would be starting in January the next two months along with some other people around the street. So, um, it's a process, it's working. Um, I appreciate it, it's always, I'll tell everybody in the room, and it's, Director Sparks is always willing to, if we open it up and give you that project, we can ask the care so that you can do the same thing down behind the commission, and I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Chairman, the office is good with July for our next meeting.
Okay. That's the way to enter. Another announcement, somebody has clarification. The three cancers that were added issue were breast, pancreatic, and prostate, which we were told we would never get. So, because if you're a male, you live to seven, you have a ninety percent chance of having prostate. For the twenty-five year olds, she not have prostate. That's, that's the problem, the age which we're getting is getting. So those three, three is denied cancers under presumption of. Uh, July for future.
I think you, let's be, you know, you just. He got a.
I was just gonna say thank you for your consideration, your time, uh, appropriate approval for my, my training. I was just gonna say thank you for your time and consideration, and the approval for my, for my submission. So we could do it in middle Tennessee, the Southeastern Association of Fire Chiefs in conjunction with Tennessee Fire Chief, now you all in the building.
Where? We're out there, we're, we're. Got the business of doing it with the conjunction with the Tennessee Fire Chiefs.
July fourth is Friday? Yeah, do the next week's, we're probably in the month, starting on twenty-first. July twenty-first, twenty-second, and then we. In middle Tennessee TVB.
What about the week before?
That's, that's the Southeastern, oh, Joe, Fire Chief, yeah, in Brown. I was gonna say, it's at the end of the week.
What's it look like at the end of the month?
That's all I just thought you wanted to do, so.
Good.
Unfortunately, that, those three days I'd have time.
Mr. Chairman, if we need to move it to jam, we are, that was one of.
Pretty wide.
Well, uh, no, the, it's, once a quarter.
Second, as you, they don't really.
Yeah, it's not.
So on August. So now, maybe not, to me, I just have a form, okay.
I can do any day of week of the twenty-first over twenty-eighth.
That's what it's coming with.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, yes.
Great.
And because we've already done, I mean, each brand of vision.
Studying metal.
It's, uh, it's a wild card.
But you can't remove the August P M O conference, and I have seen, uh, several conferences in August, so.
We're doing the middle, we see, I think we could do like the nine and then workshop followed by evening.
Oh, we're on your Tuesday. That was usually, I don't know, I don't, I don't mind me too.
So did they say the twenty-ninth?
On Tuesday, twenty-ninth.
That's traveling, then the twenty-eighth, and then.
Leave zero nine hundred.
Workshop followed by evening, so.
August or July?
July. I'm gonna get the answers. Okay, we'll say the next meeting is July twenty-nine, feel Tennessee address to be done.
I make the motion to accept that?
I'll say it. First, by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Winfield. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Any other things you would do with the commission? Next meeting, uh, P meeting, I'll send it in.
Not yet.
Okay. It'll be on, it'll be on the, uh, website, and then at.
There's, I'm sorry, there's one more piece ahead. Uh, for those that don't know, every meeting that we have, either a commission meeting, and I believe now also with our subcommittee meetings. and I believe now also with our subcommittee meetings, we are now doing on teams. The link will be provided on through fire or through the commission email.
And also it will, it's on the website as well.
And on, on the website. So if you're unable to make the travel necessary to attend a meeting in person, you now can participate online through teams. And Ms. Laura does say, any comments that are added during the meeting, she does present it out to the, the commission for us to review and be able to answer.
Motion, agree with you. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye aye.